Ms. Cal, I'm gonna help her click the arrows as she goes through her presentation. And Ms. Cal, I'll let you take us through it.
Okay, so, members of the board, we're gonna look at the Smarter Balance scores from last year. Keep in mind, it still is a very new test. So, it's complex for all districts, are much more complex than the previous one. Okay, so, it's always a good idea to look at the neighboring districts in terms of similar districts geographically and demographically. And so, I include Berkeley, which is not necessarily demographically very similar, but geographically. And then, of course, Oakland is both, in terms of close to our district, in terms of demographics and, of course, geographically. And so, this is what you're looking at right now is a representation of all the students who actually passed the test. Okay, so, all the students who met the standard in English language charts. So, as you can see, we did pretty well in grade three, right on par with Berkeley. So, here, our district is red, Berkeley is yellow, and Oakland is green. And we could do better in fourth and fifth grade, and sixth grade, and seventh grade. But we did amazingly in eleventh grade, right? We actually left the other two districts behind. Next slide, please. Now, these are all of our students that met the standard in mathematics. And what jumps out at me immediately is our fourth grade did really, really well. Actually, left the other two districts way behind, in terms of students who actually met the standard. Our third grade did pretty well, too. We have a lot of work to do in grades five, six, and seven. We can do better in eighth and eleven. But if you compare the three districts, we are always either better or very close to Oakland. And sometimes we leave other districts behind. Okay. So, this one, you know, the majority of our population is African-American, of course. And so, I decided to disaggregate this data to show you how African-American students did. So, this represents how African-American students who met the standard did in language charts, all of them, okay? So, again, in grade three, we did much better than our little districts, and four. In our middle grades, we have some work to do. Although, in grade eight, we came back up and were better than the rest of the districts. And then, in eleven, we're better than Oakland. We're kind of in the same realm. Please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is the same for African-American students in mathematics. Anything jumps out at you?
Fourth grade.
Grade four, huh? Look at that. Now...
Sixth grade.
Well, sixth and seventh grade, actually, fifth, two, and eighth grade, we need to do better there, no question about it. Luckily, we have all new teachers there, too, who are teaching mathematics, so hopefully, that will change. And we will focus on that. That'll be the area of focus. That's what test scores are for.
Is it the same teacher teaching grade four this year?
Yes, right?
One is, one is the same.
Right.
One is the same.
One is the same, right?
Right.
Ms. Johnson, I think. Yes. But, you know, the idea is not to single out a specific teacher. It's to disseminate expertise across the board. So, we will be just learning from each other. This is informative for us. Okay, go back, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you went way too far. You have to go back.
Oh, more, what, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought I must've hit that button.
You're going, you're going...
There we go.
Okay, so, that's where we were. Okay, so, let's go to the next slide. Now, this is our native speakers.
Can you go back one more, sorry?
Sure. This is mathematics.
Who met the standard?
Who met the standard. And I'm seeing...
Who met the standard?
I'm seeing fifteen percent in Berkeley.
What grade?
The fourth grade, Berkeley, I'm seeing fifteen percent, mathematics gave the standard.
Of African-Americans?
Are you sure? Go scroll up, please. Let me see that it's African-Americans, actually, because I double-checked every number.
Berkeley unified ethnicity.
Right?
That's language charts.
Well, you know what you need to do? You need to refresh your ethnicity, because sometimes you put it there, but it doesn't truly apply the data. Now, go black. This is English. Mathematics, now, let's look at fourth grade.
Four plus eleven is fifteen.
So, what are you saying?
You're saying eleven.
No, I did not. It's only those who met. I'm not taking met and above. You're looking at met and above.
So, we had forty-seven percent meet in mathematics?
Yes, we do.
So, you didn't put on here above, so above would be higher?
After that, I'll show you. But this is just those who met.
As a category versus those who land in above, or those who land at whatever the other category, below, after the other category.
Right. Okay, so, this is our native speakers and those who met the standard again in language charts. So, we have pretty good results in grade three, as you can see. We have amazing results in grade eleven, right? And we did pretty well in grade four. Our middle grades need more work again. So, that's gonna be our focus for the year. Okay. This is the same, our native speakers in mathematics. Sixth and seventh grade will have to do a lot of work. Again, we have new teachers, so that's good. We did very well in fourth grade, as we saw before, because our African-Americans are majority. They would be very similar here, right? But I'll show you some other segregation. Okay, so, these are English language learners. And the reason you don't see grades six, seven, and eight, and eleven is because, in interest of student privacy, if there are less than ten students, the department of education, proper department of education doesn't afford this course. So, I excluded the other districts because it's a little... But here's the data. So, it's interesting, right? We do very, well, we do pretty well in grade three and then in grade four. We're not doing so great, and I thought maybe it's because we have more newcomers in that grade. I would have to investigate further why this is happening in fourth grade, right? Fifth grade, we're doing better than Oakland, but we can do better. That's English language charts.
Do you recall, is fourth grade zero because there aren't sufficient students, or there's no one in that category?
No, if, if there weren't sufficient students, that wouldn't include that, right? So, yes, nobody. But again, there may be newcomers there who just start learning English. So, they would be expected to get zeros.
Okay.
Okay. Next one is the same for English learners in mathematics, those who met the standard. Third grade did much better than the rest of the districts, right? Fourth grade did pretty well, too. Eighth grade is better than Oakland again, somewhere in the middle, between the two neighboring districts. Now, remember, they have different demographics, and so, they have much more support at home and... That's just a speculation. We don't know for sure, but they may. Okay, here is a different type of disaggregating of scores. So, this is just grade three, right? And what you're looking at are students who didn't meet the standard, students who nearly met the standard, students who met the standard, and students who exceeded the standard, okay? And I used the color scheme of, you know, road lamp, some other road lights. So, you have red for those who didn't meet, and yellow for those who nearly met, and green is good color. And then, anything on the top, the cherry on the top is purple here. Okay. So, as you can see, we did better than all of the districts in third grade for African-American students. Because, you see, we have less kids, forty-six percent. We also have the same amount of students who nearly met. And we have more students who met, although Berkeley has a little bit more students who exceeded. What is interesting to me here is that, that area of students who nearly met the standard, because that begs the question, what can we do to push them relatively, because they're very close? And it's interesting that all three districts have the same amount of kids, or percentage of kids, I should say.
Up there for nearly?
For nearly, yeah. This is third grade, black or African-American students who, that's their achievement in mathematics, right? And so, we didn't do as well in mathematics as in English, but pretty well, still, comparing to other districts. We're close to Berkeley in some ways, you know? We have more students who actually met the standard, less students who exceeded the standard. Pretty close in the percentage of students who are nearly meeting the standard. Okay, this is fourth grade comparison. Look at our scores. We did better than everybody here, right? Very impressive. This is our African-American students. Okay, and this is the same, African-American students in fourth grade and how they did in mathematics. Also, they did very, very well comparing to the neighboring districts.
Did our fourth grade class move this year?
No.
Going into this new year or no?
No. In fact...
They didn't move the year before either.
Nobody moved, right? Remember, the teachers wanted to stop moving. We have two new to us, not new, new experienced teachers in fifth grade this year.
Right, but these are the results of the third grade teacher, or fourth grade teacher, I guess, from last year. From last year, so this is...
Right, so, who, I don't know who...
This is Ms. Johnson's class, right?
Ms. Johnson and his coach. I believe it's fourth grade, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Why do you only know the African-American students?
Well, we're not. We're also looking at English language learners, and we're looking at all English students, speaking students. So, we're looking at different subgroups.
But, but African-Americans are our largest population, so it's warranted to look at their performance right now. Okay, this is fifth grade. We could do better in fifth grade, right? Although, we were pretty close to Oakland, but that's not, we want to improve that. And with new teachers, we will hopefully, plus, we'll focus on that. Fifth grade in mathematics, a little bit better. Interestingly, we're almost the same in terms of African-Americans not meeting the standards here with Berkeley. And we have more students who nearly met the standard, but they have more students who actually met the standard. So, hopefully, again, we will have to figure it out in grade levels, groups. What is it, what will it take to push these kids to meet the standard?
It'd be interesting to see that over time. If we're getting this big bump in fourth grade, you know, are we seeing a decline in fifth grade? Because in theory, it's the same.
Same subgroups of students.
It's either a cohort effect.
Right.
Right, was the third, was our fourth grade population just as high in third grade, right, or...
Correct.
We had a bump in the third grade last year. Well, and it's an interesting question for eleventh grade also, because was it that the tenth grade class the year prior was, had such, or had a series in years of great teachers? And then, eleventh grade, was it that cohort, or was it the teacher? And how do you, and this is a little hard for a person to know, which is, but same question in my head.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry, did you discuss...
No, so, this is sixth grade. Again, we need to work on sixth grade for all of our populations, including African-American kids. And this is sixth grade in mathematics. It's interesting. We need to focus on mathematics even more than English in middle grades. You know, and it's so critical, because that's will determine their success in high school, so we need to really, really zero in on that. Seventh grade again, we are, yeah, that's our area of focus for this year. This is seventh grade in mathematics. Same thing. We need to focus on that. Eighth grade, the picture is becoming better. So, we have, basically, we're almost on par with Berkeley, if you look at it, in terms of kids who didn't meet, and those kids who nearly met. We have more kids who met, but less kids who exceeded. So, basically, if you look at meet and exceed, we have the same amount for African-American population here. We are way behind, but Oakland, the head of Oakland.
Right, but I mean, at four percent, that's two kids.
Well, it could be.
No, it is. I mean, it's, right, we had fifty kids in the eighth grade last year, if my counting is correct. And so, sixteen, eleven, yeah.
Well, I mean, all of this is percentage of kids who took tests, right?
What I'm saying, it represents, we had two kids who met the standard, total.
Which probably means that nine percent is also not a very large number for Berkeley.
No, Berkeley, Berkeley is a large number.
It is a larger district.
It's a much larger number.
Okay.
So, it's hard.
I mean, you were...
Yes, go. Okay, this is our eleventh grade. We're somewhere in the middle again. With eleventh grade language charts, English language charts. Again, we'll be pushing forward with that. And mathematics, we really need to focus on mathematics in the eleventh grade with African-American students. Okay, now, this is English learners. I find this really interesting, because our district, our teachers, I talked to the bilingual coordinator, and she says that there was some work done with bilingual strategies, strategies for teaching English learners across the board. So, I think that's the testimony to that, because it appears that we're doing quite well in terms of English learners, if you look at that, right? We have a large group of them, almost meeting the standard, nearly meeting the standard. We need to push that group, but that's impressive.
Well, I'm just curious how many people that actually makes up. What's our number of English learners at that grade level?
It's a valid question. However, we are a small district comparing to the two other districts. So, no matter what you look at, it'll be a smaller number of kids.
And who are the ones learning English? Are they the Hindu, the Punjabi, the Cantonese, the Mandarin? Right, there's so many different groups that come to collaborate in an English learner field. And then, with African-American or black population, it's tuned in, but we have so many different categories that it will consider an English learner. I'd like to see the breakdown and...
It's no problem. I can provide that. Although, from the top of my head, I can just tell you, we only have one newcomer who is Hispanic. So, the rest of the kids, non-Hispanic kids, that's all I know at this point.
At third grade school, or just...
No, at the whole school. In the whole school, one newcomer, right, who's getting services.
It's a little boy.
So, which means, which means that we have a lot of students from, I think, Yemen, which you have to understand that these kids very often come with no prior formal education, with huge gaps in formal education. So, it's a tough group, so that's impressive to me.
So, for the English learners, but among our English learners, they're probably, I'm assuming, mostly Spanish-speaking?
No, not mostly. No, it's about half and half, but in terms of newcomers.
No, I'm not asking about newcomers. I'm gonna say about total population.
Total, but...
Across the district.
Yeah, yeah.
English learners.
Right, it's about half and half, I would say.
Okay.
Half?
It, it's about balanced, so, half of the kids are Spanish speakers and... Yeah, primarily Arabic.
Okay.
So, but, but it's still, it's pretty good, right? Because, like I said, a lot of kids from Yemen have no formal, and a lot of kids from Spanish-speaking countries come with no formal, or small.
That's crazy, because the kids who are proficient in English are not doing as well, or have not met the standards as well as those who are picking up a second language, coming to the country, coming to the school district, and yet, our kids who have been here are still failing.
So, it's interesting that you bring this up. This is one of my favorite subjects. I looked across the board at many, many districts, and just without no fail, in every district, kids who are reclassified English speakers, meaning that they came as immigrants and learned another language, and they're truly bilingual by our definition, they score better than native speakers in English and mathematics. Every district. It's a little bit less evident in higher economic, socioeconomic districts, but still is there. And so, what that is, it's a testimony to bilingualism, really. And there's a lot of research right now that bilingualism is really good for the brain, postpones Alzheimer's and all that. So, these kids were already exposed by the nature of being bilingual. Their brain is more expanded, and that's not a surprise. It just, to me, it's a big argument in introducing foreign languages across the United States.
Right, but there's also a deficit and a void when you have these children who have been in these classrooms, who know this language, who should know the curriculum, but do not meet the standards, or do not even exceed the standards to the least bit. And then, you have someone who comes, learns the language, you know, picks up different varieties of the component, and then, they excel more so. I know, I, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, you understand that...
No, and I understand. It's a big concern.
It's a huge concern.
But also, you might ask yourself, those kids who were reclassified, maybe they're cream of the crop, too, right? Because there are some kids who weren't yet reclassified. There are some long-term ELS. So, kids who were even born in this country, don't speak English as their native language or first language, and are behind. And that's like across the United States. I'm not talking about our district specifically. So, yeah, it's a real issue. Achievement gap is a huge issue, and we need to focus on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is fourth grade in English language charts for English learners. As I said, something is happening here, so I wonder if there are more newcomers here, but I need to look at that data closer.
Right, I'm sorry. Did I take this wrong?
Yeah, 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 that one, yeah. And then, in mathematics, though, it's pretty good.
This is a dozen kids.
Well, but still, that's what it is.
Right.
Then...
I'm sorry, you asked to see this one one more time?
I did, yeah.
So, you see, in English, they're not doing as well as third graders. That's all I'm saying. Well, but again, you don't know when they came to the country, right? So, maybe a third grader had already second and first grade in the country, and that's why they're scoring well, and some fourth graders just came. We don't know that. It's just speculation.
You can do that analysis, though, can't you?
Yeah, yeah. And I will, and I will look at it. I was trying to give you a big picture at this point, because there are so many things I can disaggregate in the data. And I think that's a conversation for our teachers to really zero in on what we need to focus on.
Looking at your graph here, I don't know if you have a, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but do you have an aggregate picture of the entire population, school population? Don't segregating it into, into categories?
I did not put it into...
Because the reason is because, as, 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 remember, Pat's pointed out, as far as your sample size compared to the other two entities is totally skewed. And if you have one or two students move from one group to the other, it changes those percentages dramatically. So, these numbers are kind of hard to compare to the other two entities. If you had districts of the same size, the breakdown would be a little bit more difficult, because there probably isn't that many districts that are similar to ours.
Right.
So, I'm having a hard time digesting these numbers to be equal in, in, in status, because they really aren't, because you could change, it's two students would move in from one category to the other, and you would widely change. Where you had four students in Berkeley, or eight students in Oakland, it wouldn't change the numbers.
Absolutely, you're right. But your argument also stands for the negative effects, too, right? So, if we are lower, it may be just one student, too, with two students. So, I mean, I'm comparing it with what I hear, right? And our district is a small district.
And we did the same. We, I appreciate the presentation last year. I think we did something similar. We compared how we did with the other districts locally, so we have something to compare against.
It would be nice to have a comparison, because we are a one-site school now, to see how someone in the field of pre-K or K through twelve is, how their test scores come out, or how their proficiency statuses come out, just to see the scale that we are, because we are now a multi-use facility or school, how other schools go about, you know, making sure that they meet their standards, so...
Sure. We'll need a little bit more data. No, it's true, but remember, this is a new test again.
Right, but for future, yeah, for future tests.
Yeah, I agree with you, absolutely. It's a very interesting question. So, again, first grade, we need to work on, even with English language learners. Mathematics, same thing. We need to focus more on that.
Okay. Ah, is it the last one?
What's after that? Yeah, I think it is, actually.
Okay.
So, you know, in summary, all of your concerns are valid, and your points are valid. They are not the same size district, no question about it. But our, every child counts, right? If it's your child, you will definitely want them to be counted. And so, you know, we can only zero in on every child and try to make it better. But, like, overall, we are doing better than Oakland, for sure, percentage-wise, again.
Not overall, but...
You would hope. We only have...
A lot of times, but a handful of kids to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Start getting to the next tier.
Absolutely.
Dozens of schools to look at. We have one, you know? So, where's, where's that void coming from?
Well, they also have a larger staff, too.
Right, which I'm saying, they have more resources allocated throughout their districts and throughout their schools, and yet, we have one, and yet, our kids still cannot meet the standards or exceed the standards in these last few years. Because when I, I remember looking at my scores from my graduating class, we were proficient and above when it came down to the KC or different standardized tests. And now, to see that there's, you know, information that, or resources that have been neglected or zero to none, you know, what can we do?
How do we do compared to last year?
I don't know yet.
Again, this test for accountability purposes was only used last year the first time. Many districts piloted it, but, I mean, really...
That's another, are you looking compared to...
We didn't look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
There are many ways to look at this. The bottom line is, it's not just the data. It's what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm encouraged by the third and fourth grade.
I'll do my best. That's what I hear.
The, overall, our, the level of proficiency of all these districts, including us, is too low.
I agree with you, Paul.
We wanna be doing better than minority of our students meeting or exceeding the standard.
Right, you look even at Berkeley, right? Almost half of their kids didn't pass, so that's not very impressive. So, yeah, everybody has a long way to go.
The, it's quite encouraging that with our small district and focus in the third and fourth grade, we can see significantly better results. On the other hand, it's disappointing then to see those results disappear fifth, sixth, seventh, and beyond. So, I assume that's part of what you're gonna be looking at, and you're gonna be looking at is, what can we do in those grades to, you know, continue that and improve on instead of going the other way?
Absolutely, and I, and I'm not gonna beat around the bush on this. You know, we went through three or four teachers for the two fifth grade classrooms last year. We had a, not a great situation for...
Got to give you the story.
Middle school math. So, all these teachers have been replaced, and so, with, which I think with much stellar teachers. Because at the end of the day, it also will come down to the teacher and how good they are, what they do. And so, I have a very positive feeling based on our current staffing of our new teachers that these scores are gonna go, particularly fifth to eighth grade.
Yeah, because it's interesting to see how, you know, there was such a break in the middle school, and then, when you go into the high school, and you look at the high school scores, and you see eleventh grade, and if I'm...
You're better, yeah.
Please correct me, if I'm correct, the eleventh graders that we looked at last year were the first class that was moved to Santa Fe, the first, like, lower-level class that was moved during our transition. Yeah, so, now, we look back, and it's just, what, what was the difference between the eleventh graders and the twelfth graders? And then, what was the difference between the tenth graders and the eleventh graders? That when you have the eleventh grade, that's when you're trying to, you know, get all of your colleges and all of your tests done and wrapped up, and figure out your plan for your senior year, and then, your plan for the remainder of your future. And so, to see that it didn't really carry through from tenth to eleven, but in eleven, they just spiked up. Like, what was that drastic change? What caused that change in those students and in their curriculum?
Very good question, no question about it. Also, just to, I mean, not that it's any consolation, but if you look at test scores across any district, I would argue, you will see that third and fourth grade usually do better than middle grades. So, middle grades are a problem across the nation. And it's a really good place to focus and to see what we can do, because it... And it's a really good place to focus and to see what we can do, because it really is a foundation for kids in high school and college.
We seem to have more of a drop off than other districts.
Well, yes, and, and that's why I'm very encouraged by the fact that now we have new teachers, and I heard that the hiring process was extremely rigorous. Which is huge.
We, we, we have heard that, and, and uh seems to be the case that there was a lot of attention paid to, to the hiring this year, so we're, we're, it's still early in the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully that will have a big effect.
Yeah, and, and at every school I've worked in, I, you know, I've had at times, I could pick them when I was a principal, two or three, what would I call them, rock stars, teachers, and it didn't matter what was the CST or some other assessment, their classes every year were off the charts. So it really does, in my mind, come down to the teacher and the quality of the teacher. So the, the more quality we have in the classrooms, the more we're gonna see that play out this way. And I think what you're seeing in fifth through eighth grade exemplifies the problems we had last year in that staffing issue.
And, and the benefit of being small is, it really is just, you change one teacher.
That's gonna show.
And it's gonna, it's gonna be.
Is there, is there any way to overlay, and being this is getting a lot esoteric, but is there any overlay, any way to overlay the socioeconomic breakdown?
Yes, no problem, yeah.
And see if there is, if it's correlated, I mean, there is, but it to really enforce that fact that.
Yeah, we can, we can bring this up, but, but you realize that, that the majority of students will be low socioeconomic. So it's not gonna be significant statistically in this particular district. But we can bring it up this season.
But you could, you could compare our low income to Berkeley's and Oakland's.
Yeah.
So our, there's a thirteen point difference overall between both tasks, between the economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged.
And also, like with mathematics, I know that now, in this, in this age that we're in, um, it's more of a STEM. Like, people focus more on the science, technology, engineering, um, some people include the arts as well as math. Um, if we could also get a breakdown of what's going on in the sciences, um, I mean, that's definitely a component that you would think would be part of the trinity of education. You have your English, of course, that's a basis, you need to be proficient to have communication, um, your math, and then your science as well.
Well, so, so this year is gonna be the first year that every district is going to actually use the new science test, so we'll have some data. Uh, they were thinking about doing piloting, but it's gonna be across the board and confirmed, so we'll have some data. I think it's fifth and eighth, and then one grade in high school by choice, we'll, we'll get to choose.
Ms. Kell, I appreciate your presentation, and thank you for what you put into it.
Thank you, no problem, have a nice afternoon, everybody, thank you very much for doing this hard work in your PIB.
It's interesting, there's only one group that did well across the board, and that's parent level college education and beyond. Everybody else, everything else, you can just go for econ or whatever.
Gorgeous.
But that, and we guys, at, at, uh, language one, we guys did very well.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you guys didn't look at disabled students, students with disabilities?
No, I did not, but if you want me to bring it some next minute, I mean, there are so many ways to disaggregate and so many things within that.
It just was really particularly low, we were third at the state level, and.
Oh, we should have got language arts and the academy.
Yeah, well, look at it, definitely.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we got seventy kids with an IP and a full-time director.
Can we work?
Yeah.
So let me move, thank you, Ms. Kell, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.